All right, good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I got a few announcements and some special recognitions, so I'll get right to it. So, first announcement is the City of Anacortes offices will be closed on December twenty-fifth. That's Monday and January first, that's also a Monday. There won't be any garbage service on either of those dates, so for those Monday customers will be collected on Tuesday, and that's December twenty-sixth and January second. APD, Anacortes Police Department, Animal Control, Pet Food and Supply Drive is continuing till the twenty-second of December. Donations may be left at the Police Department or Pet Place Market. Christmas tree recycling will be done by the Anacortes High School Key Club. That'll be Saturday, January sixth, and it says by donation. You do need to email the Key Club to sign up, keyclubanacortes@gmail.com, and there will be more details on our city website that'll link you to that info. And I'm gonna read a quick note of thanks to the city staff, and it was, there was no return address, so it's, the return address said Resident of Anacortes. So, thank you for the community support, and this is addressed to city staff. Thank you for the community support. Notable presence and commitment is so appreciated, such as football support, winter walk, lighting parades, community pride, appreciate you. So, that was a nice note, and that's a great segue into some more thanks of specific members of the city staff. And that's the cue for Mr. Raym to start walking up here. But we're on to item three A, which is Mayor's Award of Merit, and this is a couple of presentations that I'll have to try to get organized, and Mr. Raym will tell me who's going first, and then I'll come out and ruin some pictures and grip and grin.
Sure. Mayor Council, good evening. Andy Raym, Public Works Director. It's an honor to have both the Mayor's Award to go to the Public Works Department. We are often, actually, we typically appreciate not being noticed, but tonight, we're gonna make an exception to that as a department. Two gentlemen here that are receiving the Mayor's Honor of Merit, is that the correct term?
The Mayor's Award of Merit.
Award of Merit. Do you wanna do one at a time, and I'll just do a brief intro for them?
Sure, yeah, let's try that way.
Let's do, the first one is Mark Gatto. Gatto? I said it wrong, okay. Mark, come on up.
All right, so that's your intro right there? Okay, so I can take it from here.
So wastewater treatment plant operators are born, they're not made. It's a calling, to be honest with you. It's really interesting to see, a lot of people are like, don't appreciate what these guys do, but they actually keep, when you flush, it goes away, and they are one hundred percent behind that, and they're an amazing group of people. I've worked in multiple cities, and it's fascinating, the culture of a wastewater crew is the culture of a wastewater crew, and it's a very distinct group of people, and they're absolutely committed to doing their jobs, so with that one, hand over.
Okay, so I'll highlight some of the things from your nomination packet to embarrass you, but then you'll get a nice gift card here at the end. So, since two thousand and fifteen, as a Group Four operator, and as I understand it, that means you're trained in pretty much all the key areas, ops, lab, incinerator, and maintenance. So, really, that highlights your, all these areas of responsibility exceeds all expectations, and as an experienced operator, I know the team relies on you to train folks. So, some of the highlights, keen observation skills, do identify problems before becoming major issues, that's huge with our aging, somewhat aged plant, so that's really important. Mark continually seeks out additional training that is relevant for the Anacortes wastewater treatment plant and the wastewater industry as a whole. Again, Mark works with new operators and interns, explaining and demonstrating the processes and procedures. Mark has a positive can-do attitude, he is a productive example to other operators and can be relied upon to make good decisions that impact the performance of the plant. So, thank you, Mark, you're a great example for your fellow employees, and a credit to the city and the citizens that we serve. So, I will come over and give you a nice certificate, and more importantly, they don't show me what the gift card is in case it might go missing, so. Anyway, it's, I think it's a dinner, depending on inflation, it might be just a lunch, so.
Next one is John Norris, he's with the Engineering Division, John, why don't you head up here? John's been with the city for, I think, five years? He's working on five years, five years? He worked, he started with the fiber group, and then he moved over to Engineering and Public Works, so I get to claim credit for somebody else's hire, thank you. But John is a solid employee, he's here every day, is very clear, concise, exact, if you wanna, I've really enjoyed working with him for the few months I have, and just a little side note, my uncle is also his wife's aunt. So, we're cousins, that's how we sum it up, anyhow, go ahead, Mayor.
All right, well, I don't think that's how the nomination packet came through, but well, that's good info to have. So, some highlights from the nomination board, so John has performed as city's project inspector manager for the Gwemas View backbone portion of the city fiber optic network project in a superior manner, bringing significant financial schedule and ongoing fiber optic network performance to the city. And I could probably just stop with this one, but John's close consciousness oversight of Summitex construction work resulted in the work being completed at three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars under the contract price. So, that's huge right there. Seems maybe we could've gotten you a bigger gift card, but. So, John took care to maintain strong communications with the contractor, resulting in the contractor taking strong responsibility for the work, minimizing schedule delays, and creating superior solutions. And again, that is real money, real savings, and I appreciate the work there. Your work is a great credit to yourself and the City of Anacortes, so thank you, and I'll come bring you some goods. Okay, there's still a couple more swag items that I have, surprise. These are Pride and Service Awards, and the first one is for one year, I know you're at the two-year, about the two-year mark, but you know, it took a while to build the coffee mug. So, Pride and Service for one year is Amanda Hubick. And one more Pride and Service, and this is for five years, Mr. Anthony Young. Okay, good stuff there, and now we're on to our regular reports, and our regular reports start with three B Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I don't think that we had a scheduled Finance Committee in this past week.
I think you're correct, thank you for that.
Mr. McDougal confirms.
All right, yep, next up would be the Housing Affordability Community Services Committee Report, I do believe that one met.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I'm a little bit out of practice with the microphone. So, the Hacks Committee met on December thirteenth, and Dustin Johnson of the Anacortes Family Center was one of our guests, and he brought us a little bit up to speed on the Coordinated Entry Contract that used to be held by Community Action and now is by Volunteers of America. This is a new, this is a switch-over in the organization that's running it, and this is where, when people are in difficulty, particularly with their housing, they go to Coordinated Entry and they get added to a housing interest pool, it's very complicated, there's a lot to it. Anyway, Volunteers of America out of Snohomish County are, is the new organization in charge of that. We don't know a lot yet, even though they take over on February first, but the feeling has been that they don't want to fix anything that's not broken, but they want to improve things where they see that need, so they run a two-one-one line in Snohomish County, which I believe is for mental health crises, and they will also be in charge now of the homeless point in time count that takes place yearly in January. So, we're not sure how that transition is going to look, but we will know more as it, as time goes on. We also talked about a few things briefly. We are talking about what to do for more, some development regulation changes that went to the Planning Commission last Wednesday night regarding ADUs having no owner occupancy and doing some of the, changing some of the conditional use permits to outright permitted uses, to streamline the process. And there are already things that are permitted, but this changing them to automatically permitted will save a lot of money and a lot of time and get more housing built, is really the goal with those. And that's all I have.
So, Ms. Moulton, since you still have the floor, I think you wanted to, I certainly would like to acknowledge the fact you're back in council chamber, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, I just, I did, thank you, Mayor Miller, I did want to acknowledge that I've not been here in person for a while. Back in April, I received a diagnosis of invasive breast cancer and began immediately a pretty intensive treatment of chemotherapy, and that compromised my immune system, so I was in isolation for quite a while, and I also had surgery about two and a half weeks ago. So, the good news is I'm on the other side of that, and the post-surgery pathology report came back, and it turns out that I am now absolutely free of cancer. Thank you so much. Every kind of word and thought that has come in my direction, I am so grateful for, and there have been many from every direction, and I'm very, very grateful, every one of those has counted and helped, so I never doubt that your kind words and thoughts make a difference in someone's life, and I am thrilled to be back here in person, and glad to see you all, and thanks, thanks again.
Thank you. Any other announcements and committee reports that could top that? Mr. Walters.
The Public Works Committee is listed here, but staff had nothing for us, so the committee did not meet.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public, wish you to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda. I don't have anybody signed up. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda, items five A and B, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to other business, item six A, this is Resolution thirty-one forty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Joint Resolution Reaffirming Equity and Inclusion. It's a discussion item, possible action, we had this action, this item last week, and not everybody was here, we've got everybody here, but I think it's important enough that I will read this resolution again and then turn it over to council for action. Resolution thirty-one forty-two, a joint resolution of the City Council and Mayor of Anacortes reaffirming citywide policy of inclusion, whereas the city elected officials passed resolution in two thousand and sixty on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, whereas the current city elected officials want to formally reaffirm their commitment to this policy, whereas the city elected officials recognize the following principles as fundamental and true to the values, unity and hospitality found throughout the Anacortes community, we understand that every person should be measured by the content of their character, their inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness belongs to all people equally. We expect all individuals to be treated fairly and to be allowed to live their lives with dignity free from mistreatment and targeting. We firmly reject and condemn all acts of racism, harassment, intimidation, and other forms of bullying. We firmly reject, condemn, as contrary to our values, acts of hate speech, speech that attacks a person or group on the basis of race, color, ethnicity, ancestry, national origin, immigration status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, mental or physical ability, economic status, housing status, social status, system of belief, practice of faith. We believe that the clear and noteworthy spirit of our community as a whole is welcoming and kind, richly diverse, and warmly accepting of everyone, locals and visitors alike. We are committed to maintaining Anacortes as a welcoming, safe, and just community for everyone. We will continue to work in cooperation with our community partners to ensure that consistent with the new law, with the law, our services and programs are accessible and open to all individuals. Now therefore be jointly resolved by City Council and Mayor of the City of Anacortes, Washington as follows, the City Council and Mayor declare it to be the policy of the City of Anacortes, that the city, that our city is accessible and open to everyone, to vigorously oppose all acts of racism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and hate speech toward anyone, and to provide equal access to our local government, to all persons in our city. And that is it, and over to council for any action. Comments, questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So, we had a good discussion about this last week, and the reason that we held it to this week was because we were really hoping to have unanimity in our vote, and I believe we will have that tonight, and I'm so glad to be here for it. So, I move we approve Resolution thirty-one forty-two, a joint resolution of equality and inclusion that reaffirms the city's commitment to being accessible, open, and welcoming to all.
Second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Resolution thirty-one forty-two, any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, and then Ms. Cleland McGrath.
You know, this is so important to our society, that we stand together as people of good conscience, and that the fight that we all fight is to fight to be together as good people in a society, in a community that we all want, that we have to build together. One of the things that came out long ago, and it was this quote by a wonderful, brilliant woman, Barbara Jordan, and Barbara Jordan was a long ago someone that broke the barriers of color, sex, and ran for Congress, but this is what she said that I thought was so important that we all remember, especially now. She said, "If the society today allows wrongs to go unchallenged, the impression is created that those wrongs have the approval of the majority." That's why we really have to be clear about our stance and clear about what we will or will not allow to come and to harm and to try to blame and incite, and so that's why it's so beautiful for the city that we live in and the people that are here. You know, I've lived a lot of that my life, and you know, I've found beautiful people, but that's why it's also important that you raise your voice, and I'm appreciative for our city for doing this and bringing this forward. Thank you.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that last passage, that not only is it important that we recommit to this resolution, both with our new mayor and new council members, but also that we vigorously oppose all acts of racism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and hate speech toward anyone, and that we provide equal access to our local government, to all persons in our city. And I think that that means also not just passing it today, but really reflecting on how we address it when we see it, you know, in small ways and larger ones. So, that's all I wanted to recommit and acknowledge that, so thank you.
Okay, so the motion is first by Ms. Moulton, second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter. Motion carries.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, sir.
Part of why now it's so important that when we are confronted in moments like this, that we not only resist, but we must push back with vigor. We cannot allow it to go unfettered and unchallenged, and so utilizing the resources that we have available to us, not only as a city of people, and the resources that we have within the state, we are going to push back and push back hard. The fight is for all of us, the village. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item six B, this is ordinance four zero six six, the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-nine Capital Facilities Plan, it's a discussion item, possible action, and then of course, the companion is four zero six four, the two thousand and twenty-four Operating Budget, and Mr. Stephan is here to talk to us again.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. Going through the budget, these are the highlights. Twenty twenty-four budget, the CFP total, which is the six years, and the two thousand and twenty-four CFP number, thirty-five million. Those have changed slightly from last time. The CFP, we removed the City Hall Seismic retrofit project, we removed the Fiber Highway twenty manufacturing corridor project, it's not the exact name of it, what fits on the slide, and we updated the Gwemas Channel Trail. I'll go into a little more detail on the budget book, we corrected several things in the budget book and updated the ordinance to accommodate the changes in the dollar amounts. So, also for the CFP, updated the ordinance based on the recommended language, which is that it updates the comprehensive plan as well as, and is attached as Exhibit A, so that CFP is attached to the ordinance. In the CFP, I've updated the Shannon Point Trail Project, which was previously somewhat a component of the Gwemas Channel Trail, it now is just called Shannon Point Trail and is specific to that area and specific to that money that we had discussed, removed the references to the Gwemas Channel. And then the Gwemas Channel Trail Project, it just says Gwemas Channel Trail, we've removed the references to the different phases of that project, added the EIS dollar amount to that specific project, and included language that future years of the project will be determined based on the EIS results. Also, we've changed it to a parks project in category as opposed to transportation, which better fits with its intended use. These are the changes in the budget, the same ones I had on the slide last week, but they're actually now made in the budget book, so the one that's published in the packet has these corrections in it. That's all I have for you tonight, to recap the last few meetings we've been discussing the budget. Are there any more questions or discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Mr. Stephan, I just have a question about changing it from the Gwemas Channel Trail from a transportation project to a parks project, if that affects funding streams at all, I'm guessing it doesn't, but because we're getting money from WashDOT, do they give money to parks, or does that matter? Is that, is that just not, is it just what we're calling it, and it doesn't affect it in a practical way?
Yeah, it's just the title that we're calling it, and that name of it doesn't specifically dictate or limit our funding, because the actual use of the trail would be what the funding would look at to see if they would fund it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. In one of the initial presentations to us on the Capital Facilities Plan, we were showing, I think, almost ninety million dollars in wastewater expenses over the six-year period, and now we're at thirty-seven million. I don't recall getting a summary of that change, but I imagine that projects were removed that were less certain than others. Do you have any insight into that?
I would, I guess I would have to go back and look at what initial version that you're talking about seeing. I don't remember making any changes to this wastewater project specifically in the last few iterations of the CFP.
Okay. In any case, we'll need to do a deep dive into that, because we don't have that much money available, and so a sewer rate change or change in these projects will be required in order to pay for all of those things.
Correct, one of the things we did discuss was the need for a sewer rate study sooner than later, but what we were, what we had said was that we were going to do the kind of a master plan first, that would then determine what projects would be needed in the future, and more specifically, too, the state is changing some of the wastewater regulations, and based on those changes, that'll better drive what we actually need to do or not need to do to our plant.
Yes, I think twenty twenty-five maybe is the date for those updated regulations. The sooner we are able to put the plan together and then do the rate study, the lesser the impact will be on ratepayers, so I'm hoping that we can move that forward early next year.
Fully agree.
Any other CFP-type questions? All right, this is a moment of truth for council on the CFP. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not sure, I might need some legal, so we did close the public hearing on the, on the CFP and the budget, it's up to council to make the decision, so I do recognize that a member of the public did raise their hand, but you know, the onus, I think the reason we do that is because the onus is now on council to make the decision. You correct me if I'm wrong on that? That's the, that's the reason why we have those, that's why we have that separation between the public comment period and the actual decision on it, so, sorry. between the public comment period and the actual decision on it. So, sorry.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Short of any other, I guess, questions or comments by council, I'm going to move to approve ordinance 4066 and adopt the 2024 to 2029 Capital Facilities Plan?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to adopt ordinance 4066, 2024-2029 Capital Facilities Plan. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think the plan has definitely improved since we started the discussion on it. We've gotten the Gwimis Channel Trail item, the EIS item added to the plan. We've clarified some other things, notably deleted the City Hall project that didn't have the right dollar amount, moved some other projects, like our downtown association projects into next year rather than later on. And for the moment, eliminated that three-million-dollar fiber project out Highway 20 past the roundabout. There, there is a lot more to do, I think. And we need a, we still need a better process for the Capital Facilities Plan. We, we need to really pick it up in first quarter or second quarter of next year to better articulate, I think, what we want to see before staff get down into the weeds of, of filling it in. I would also note that stat, the statute allows us to adopt the Capital Facilities Plan only with the budget. So I think probably it should have been on the agenda after the budget. So I just note that for council. I imagine that we will pass the budget and the next item here tonight. But if we didn't, I guess we would, we would have a problem.
Yeah, I, I think we had that, whether the Capital Facilities Plan had to come first or in conjunction. Can you elaborate a little bit on the discussion we had or that was had with staff about whether the chicken or the egg?
Yeah, it's a hard one because the budget ordinance includes the dollar amount from the CFPs. So, I mean, they do have to go together. And if you were to adopt the budget first, then you're already adopting the dollar amount of capital facilities from the Capital Facilities Plan. That was our discussion. And considering the fact that we start the budgeting process with capital needs and go through the Capital Facilities Plan meetings and discussions first and then go to the budget, that was the reason that we put it in that order.
So, yeah, we, we did think about that one. Okay, but there is a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to adopt ordinance 4066. Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item 6B, ordinance 4064, 2024 Operating Budget. Discussion with possible action. Mr. Stephan, anything else? I think you've, you've got anything for this one? I think we've covered most of that.
Nothing, nothing more to add at this time.
All right, council, hoping, hoping we captured all of their inputs. Mayor Miller? Mr. Carter?
No discussion tonight. I move to approve ordinance 4064 to adopt the 2024 Operating Budget.
Second?
Simultaneous seconds. Motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Ms. Hubick to adopt ordinance 4064, 2024 Operating Budget. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I just wanted to note that one thing that this budget does is incorporate the revenue that is going to be coming to us as a result of our Public Safety Levy lid lift that the voters passed earlier this year. And that's a tax increase that the voters approved, sixty-eight percent of the voters approved. But at the same time, earlier this year, we passed revisions to our utility discount program that for low-income senior and disabled families reduces their utility bills, their city utility bills, by thirty percent, which more than offsets the amount of the property tax levy that the voters passed. So the, the point here is simply that we are not being dismissive of that cost. And where we have the ability to actually affect that cost, we have taken action. And utilities is, is where we have the most room to maneuver. Otherwise, I think that we have definitely improved the budget through this process. And at this point, I can support it as presented.
Okay, still a, a motion by Mr. Carter, second by Ms. Hubick. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yeah, I just would like to say, give one more thank you to the Finance Department and the mayor and all of the directors for actually getting us this budget book before we approve it. It was very helpful and gave us a lot of clar, or at least gave myself a lot of clarity when it went, when we finally saw that. And I know that was a ton of work on all of your part. So I feel like I have a better understanding of this budget and CFP than I have in past years. So I, I just want to acknowledge that, that that was a, a real feat to accomplish it. And it's the first time it's been done at, at this time of the year versus later in the, the future upcoming years. So, and I also just want to say thank you for the FTE counts, which was an addition that I don't think was in last year. So that's helpful for council and the public to have a better understanding of how many, what our staffing looks like for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
If I can just chime on to Ms. Cleveland McGrath. You know, the city and the team and the staff have worked a bit shorthanded in the middle of auditors coming, so many other things, and being shorthanded. But yet, even in the middle of all of that, those additional things that one council wanted to see and some additional numbers, you guys have truly, you know, guys, it's not gender-specific. It's, you know, people, I don't know how to explain that. But you guys have really delivered. And it shows your commitment to the quality of service and to our city and the citizenry. And we thank you for that. It is not going unnoticed. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Carter, second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and appreciate all the work by everybody in this process. And yes, we'll continue to evaluate the Open Gov. All right, we're on to item 6D, Resolution 3139. This is 2024 Legislative Priorities. It's a discussion item with possible action, and Ms. Hsu will be presenting. And this is open for public comment.
Mayor, council members, the audience, sorry, it's louder than usual. I'm pleased to bring back the legislative priorities. We first discussed them in November. And since then, I've had some, what I believe to be good internal conversations and conversations with council members to help provide some direction moving forward. I didn't bring my pen up here. Just in case I need to make any notes. Just a reminder that the legislature will be in session from January 8th until March 7th. It is a, a short session, not a budget year. So the city staff, the, the mayor, department heads really appreciate the opportunity to have legislative priorities that we bring, where we get direction from the city council. It helps us to, to direct the conversations when we are meeting with our legislators to ensure that we have consistent messaging that, that's going forward. As we've discussed previously, the legislative priorities that the city brings forward, we try to personalize. But we do pay attention to the Association of Washington Cities, Washington Cities Insurance Authority, and then other local jurisdictions where the, the impact can be felt here at Anacortes as well. So the, the, the first item I wanted to come back to is public safety. And I believe that there was conversation through the, the Public Safety Committee as well where we have provided some additional information and clarification, specifically as it relates to recruiting and retaining police officers. There was no kind of questions about that. Vehicular pursuits, I think that there also wasn't any questions about, but specifically to the juvenile access to an attorney. So we've made efforts to, to be very clear about what it is that we are asking for, modifying two RCWs to help focus legal services provided to juvenile suspects, allowing juveniles, victims, or witnesses to engage with the law enforcement freely. And to provide an exception to the consultation requirement where information being sought would help lead law enforcement to others involved in alleged crime or the recovery of evidence or property. And the information is provided within a reasonable amount of, reasonable amount of time since the alleged crime, within twenty-four hours. So I think that we've addressed what the, the concerns were that were, that were brought forward previously. Please let me know if I'm, you know, off-base there.
So I think it was, that was the only one that there were some questions and maybe differences of, of council support. So, yeah, I'd love to flush out some council support or non-support of this.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I, I don't, I don't see how the juvenile access to attorney section has really gotten any better. I, I'm supportive of the line that recognizes the role of parents when waiving or asserting a juvenile's rights. I'm not sure "recognize" is the right word, but some verb there. And then prohibiting tele, attorneys from telephonically asserting or waiving a juvenile's rights without their consent. I'm supportive of those. The first two prongs of this as written, though, I, I just don't see how that functions. The, the purpose of attorney representation is to prevent you from making an incriminating statement to the police or to provide advice that will help you avoid that. And this suggests that, well, if you're making an exculpatory statement, you know, you can, you can do that without an attorney's assistance. But how do you know? Because you haven't received an attorney's assistance yet. There is a very long history of many states, not just Washington, changing their laws with respect to provision of attorney access to juveniles. And, I mean, that area of law has been evolving for twenty-five-plus years. And I don't think that we are experts in this. And I don't think that we have correctly captured what it is we should ask the legislature for to make it function better. But moreover, I just don't think it's one of our priorities. I mean, we have two and a half pages of priorities here. I thought that usually we were looking for a one-pager, and last year we did a one-pager. There are quite a few others on this list that I think are our priorities that maybe we'll talk about next. But this one wouldn't strike me as one of them.
Mayor Miller?
Uh, Mr. Young?
Understanding what Councilman Walters has just said, Mr. Councilman Walters, within, what are you suggesting? Are you suggesting that we eliminate it? Or are you suggesting that in lieu of this one, the other items are appropriate? The way I'm looking at this is that we're sort of putting forward as one body of many to our legislators as issues of concern. And so the question is, I know that, you know, in your efficient state, because you're very efficient. That's a compliment, all right? But, but as a broad statement of our general views, I think these are great. I mean, I really do. I don't think that it should be something that would stop us from moving this forward unless there's some strong objection to the language. I think that you're right. You know, sometimes language would be clear. That's why you write so prolifically and wonderful on many of the stuff that you bring forward. But I'm not sure if this is at that level of clarity rather than a general statement about where we are, what we think is important, and particularly making sure that it does mention the things that we do think is important, making sure that they're on the list. And I think that they are unless there's something that I'm missing or some of you have something else that you think should be on it. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Uh, Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I, the top two are pretty clear to me. And vehic, the recruit and retain police officers and vehicular pursuits. I'm not clear on juvenile access to attorney when it says modify the RCW to focus legal services provided to juvenile suspects. I don't, I don't really know what that means. So I'd like to know a little bit more about what that actually means. And also, I think that as we continue this discussion, I don't, I, I wouldn't put this at the top of my list. I would put it maybe below affordable housing. Or I, I think we could, I'd like to look at that order as we proceed.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chief might be able to expand on it. But my understanding is that juveniles can't talk to law enforcement until they talk to an attorney. And changing this or having it this way would allow them, if they wanted to, to provide information without having to wait to talk to an attorney.
Chief, go ahead.
So the issue at hand here is the statute as it's currently written and interpreted by all the legal advisors that we are using through WCIA, local prosecutors, and all the other resources that are available to the police department for legal direction as far as our operating policies. Have it interpreted it that we're not speaking with these juveniles until we offer them the opportunity to speak with an attorney? Because the statute clearly says, going back to the, the legislative bill and the RCW, if the juvenile were to believe that they are not free to leave the scene, whether we've told them that they're not free to leave or not, whether we've placed them in custody or not, if they, if their interpretation is they're not free to leave that scene, they are by de facto in custody, we must follow the requirements to read them their Miranda rights, put them in touch with an attorney. Many times in those cases, we have yet to determine if they're a witness, if they're a suspect, if they're a victim. And without being able to get to those conversations so we can determine exactly what their involvement is, has been a very much a hindrance in our investigations. We're asking the legislative body to clarify that this is intended specifically for individuals that are suspects or would be detained while we're investigating a crime. Many times after we've detained and done our initial investigation, it's become clear that they're not suspects. But we can't get to that point with the statute as our legal advisors are currently interpreting it. So we're asking for a little bit of clarification from the legislature.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So I think that what you just said helps explain the first prong here, but the, I, I can't read it and get that interpretation from it. So I think that as written, that it doesn't, it doesn't help us very much and it won't help legislators very much. Again, because in my mind, this is not a priority, I, I don't think, or it's not as big of a priority as anything else. I think it's not worth haggling about the specific language here. I'm, I would be okay with articulating to the legislature that this is an issue that we are facing that has some consequences for ability to do law enforcement. But I am less comfortable- less comfortable with prescribing a particular outcome in the change in the law, because it's complicated and because it affects defendant, a potential defendant's constitutional rights. So I wonder if we couldn't, you know, shorten this, or otherwise modify it to simply say that we've encountered difficulty applying this new law. It makes law enforcement more difficult, and we suggest the legislature in consider changes to make it easier for law enforcement to do their jobs. One of the reasons I think it's not a priority, though, is because this is a short session. This is not going to get fixed this year, or this coming year. So that's not a reason by itself to not include it, but because having them continue to think about it, I think, will be useful. It usually takes a little while for these bills to get through, but I do think it's a long road here, and we're going to need better articulation of what the problem is and what potential solutions we could have.
Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Speaking of articulation, when we had our public safety meeting, not this week, but the prior week, you made two points, so I'd appreciate if you could share that with the rest of council. One is the kind of what the repercussions are regarding referrals to prosecuting attorney, because you're not able to determine the involvement of individuals that are just related to what has happened, if they're underage, and then also the other component of now that we are, now that it is required to have body cameras, and how that is another tool to make sure that minors are treated appropriately. And I think that that was very helpful, and go, content of pushing that further of what Councilmember Walter said. To me, those are the two components where is the strongest case for needing to look at that. So could you, I can't explain it as well as you can.
Well, Ms. Cleland McGrath beat me to my next point that I was going to talk about, which is, when we have the current statute that requires law enforcement to audio and video record any interviews or interrogations with juveniles, regardless whether it's a misdemeanor or felony crime, if the intent of the youth access to council law is to prevent any interrogation tactics by law enforcement that would take advantage of the person's age, or their understanding of the legal system, you know, that's never what our intent is for any of these things. And if there is inappropriate interview tactics used, the audio and video recording's going to show that, and there is no prosecutor that is going to take a video recording that is, contains evidence that's counter to what their judicial outcome goal is, to use that in the process. In addition to that, there are several instances where we have had juveniles that have become involved in the justice system that we steer towards alternative programs, and many of those programs actually keep them out of the traditional juvenile justice system, diversion programs. Education Citation Program is a great example, where an individual that would be contacted by one of our officers using alcohol or marijuana under the age, we can divert them to the Education Citation Program, they're offered a treatment course, they have some commitments they have to fulfill, and then there's no criminal charge on their record, which is, you know, what I'm told the ultimate goal of this statute was originally, was to divert kids and keep them out of the juvenile justice system. What we've seen, because we can't determine what their level of involvement was as a witness, suspect, or victim, there's actually been more kids referred to the juvenile justice system for the prosecutor's office to sort out what classification they fall into, because we cannot proceed with a investigation as we normally would prior to this law being in effect.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
Thank you. To those points, you know, you really, in looking at the law, and, you know, there are differences from agency to agency. The undergirding assumption is that all enforcement is equal and fair. I believe the system we have here in our city, you know, under your leadership, is cut above, I honestly do, and I appreciate that. Is there work to be done? Sure, it always is, you know what I mean? Different thoughts, different ideas, different ways of getting and accomplishing something. But in this case, given, as Mr. Walters has said, you know, it's not one of the highest of our, it's one of our priorities, but, you know, and I think to Ms. Moulton's point of even how it's listed and how we push that forward, I agree with that. If there's something, you know, if we need to sort of get this behind us to go forward into this session, is there language, Mr. Walters, that you could live with? I think you sort of put forward, I thought, some concise, general language that would work, unless, if you do, what I'm asking you to do is just sort of say that, and maybe we can make this adjustment, and then this can go forward and not have to necessarily come back to us again, and, you know, the process kind of starts all over again, because I think that that was the source of contention, and quite honestly, the wording that I thought you used in was very good.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
I'll have some proposed text in a minute.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. Yeah, because where I am is trying to keep track of where council is. I've got a couple of council members that say maybe just pull it completely, a couple of council members leave it in, but that's two and two, and, but some language changes could help. Any other council members want to weigh in on that? The whole point is to get a majority. And Ms. Hubick, or, let's see, who has not commented on this one? Ms. Hubick or Mr. McDougal?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Quite frankly, I can't comment on this. Commenting as a legislative employee constitutes lobbying, so I would like to keep my job at the state, and just for the people at home, that's why I'm staying silent and will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you for that reminder. I'm just making sure that everybody has a chance to talk. All right, and Mr. McDougal?
Mayor Miller, thank you. As far as the, all the rest of the priorities, I think everything looks great. I had similar questions about the one that is under discussion. Chief had sent out an email with some additional explanations, so thank you for that, Chief. I do agree with Mr. Walters that there's like some language sort of interpretation or sort of difficult to interpret, so if he's got something here on the fly, you know, I'm generally supportive.
Thank you.
And should I keep talking and stall?
I think Ms. Cleland McGrath may help out with that.
Sure. So I go back to the first one, which is the recruit and retain police officers. We don't have much time in front of these folks, right? When we take this one-page or maybe three-page thing. I'm inclined to finesse this. We're at capacity, I mean, we're fully staffed as of now. Yes, we're going to hire five more people next year, but like, why not start with that? Like, we've done a great job, we are fully staffed, we've also got 68% of the support for additional staff, so we're doing something right. Why not tell the legislators that? That's a positive. And then folk, instead of talking about recruitment and retention, talk about the fact that we need that Basic Law Enforcement Academy up and running at SCADIT. I mean, to me, that's the first point we should really make, and say, we're doing great. One of the reasons we're doing well is we had a great HR department, working well with you guys, with the police department, and there was the intent of having it up and running last month, right? It allowed folks who were, who had families or outside responsibilities to be able to do their BLEA locally, and we got to get that done. And it also maintains the caliber of training that we expect. So to me, like, let's start with something good there. The vehicle pursuits, I'm fine with, I think it's articulated well, but I want to say that I kind of like the narrative that is the vehicular pursuits, and is there a way we could write a similar narrative for the juvenile access?
Yeah, I think Mr. Walters is working on it.
Yeah, I know, but I, if, just, I don't know if we're quite ready to say what we want done, but we can acknowledge the fact that there are some negative implications of how it's currently written.
Mayor Miller?
Mr., or Chief Floyd?
Yeah, to Ms. Cleland's point, there's some recent developments on our SCADIT Academy. There's some movement there with the recent meeting and another meeting coming up here in the next two to three weeks, so I think we will have a firm resolution on that, one way or the other, beginning of January.
I think I kind of saw out of my peripheral vision, a lot of head nodding, like, adding the language in SCADIT County certainly would make sense, so I think we can probably add that in there. And then, Mr. Walters, I think you were next.
In terms of the third topic here, first of all, I like the idea of expressing a narrative of what the problem is, rather than trying to craft the solution, but what I had written down here is, consider changes to RCW 134740 to assist law enforcement in cases of juvenile questioning, recognizing the role of parents in waiving or asserting the juvenile's rights, and prohibiting attorneys from waiving a juvenile's rights without their consent. So it doesn't get into the first two sentences here with the detail about quite how to do it, but it expresses support for the idea of helping law enforcement in cases where they're working with juveniles. Consider changes to RCW 134740 to assist law enforcement in cases of juvenile questioning, recognizing the role of parents in waiving or asserting the juvenile's rights, and prohibiting attorneys from waiving a juvenile's rights without their consent.
Rest of the council's in agreement with that. If you could just email that to Ms. Hubick and I, and we can incorporate that.
Yeah, I'm seeing lots of head nods except for one, which is the right answer. All right. Counsel ready to move on from this item? So it seems like leave it in with those changes. Thank you for that work.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, I really want to thank Mr. Walters for on-the-fly work, to come up with language. He's a great wordsmith, so thank you for the work you do on this, as well as so many other things. I know you put your heart in it. Thank you.
Thank you, I think that was good discussion.
Ms. Hubick, were there some other points that we needed to go through?
So the next item is something that, this will be the first time that we have revising the property tax cap on the city's legislative priorities, and there was a question about, well, how would this actually work? And so what it would do is it would tie the property tax cap to inflation or population growth. So let's say that the population growth in Anacortes was 3%, and the cost of living or inflation was 4%, that would be a total of seven. We would be limited to a total of 3% for a maximum. But if each was 1.5%, if there's 1.5% population growth in Anacortes or 1.5% growth in inflation, then we could take that full 3%. So it's just a tying the two. If it was less than 3%, it would also be tied to the maximum of those being added together cumulatively.
Mayor?
Mr. Walters?
So if I understand that correctly, if inflation were 0% and population growth were 5%, you could still raise property taxes 3%?
Up to a maximum of 3%.
Okay. I support tying the property tax cap to inflation, because inflation actually erodes the city's ability to pay for things. The population growth is assumedly linked to a jurisdiction's increased costs because of more demand for services, but also a lot of those services are fee-based, that should be paid for by the, by those fees, utilities, for example. Also, population growth should be covered by increased property tax on new construction. I am less convinced that the population growth factor needs to be included. I think inflation really is a no-brainer. The only argument against that is to continually exert downward pressure on property tax, but cities got to provide services. Now, I understand that this is, this is a priority that's articulated by the Association of Washington Cities, and I wonder if we might just reference...
The other thing I wouldn't mention is, so this is a MERS legislation that came very close to passing last year, so they're bringing forth the same approach to how to work with it, and so I think that the reason that I am recommending that we move forward with the same language is because it creates a consistency in city voices across the state to help with that discussion. I think it's the closest that it has ever been in terms of moving forward as a way other than being limited to the 1% property tax without going to a vote of the people.
Is there a simple change, that we could change the title here to revise the property tax cap consistent with the AWC proposal?
Sure.
Because then we are not necessarily saying it.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
One thing that I can recommend is giving an example of what we have seen other cities and other municipalities do, which is actually refer back to legislation that may still be active as you head into a supplemental year, and it looks like the bill that Ms. Hubick is referencing is Senate Bill 5618, I think it was, 5618, that's been introduced over in the Senate but didn't actually make it out of the Senate onto the floor. So there's, you know, very specific paths that things will take, but if there is an existing bill, sometimes it can simplify your one-pager and make it more easier for your legislators to focus on.
So yes, under the title, I think that we very easily could kind of update that to, to say revise the property tax cap consistent, or excuse me, to support Senate Bill 5618. Justing Senate Bill 5618.
I think everybody was good with that. The only thing that was bouncing in my brain was, as long as council's fully supportive of that, because that's specifically supporting legislation which goes into that area of, I can't remember what it's called, but as long, as long as council's all in, then that's fine.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, I think you know what I'm talking, Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I'm a little bit hesitant about that, simply for the reason that that bill is what it is at the moment and may be different later. It also includes the population change language, which is the language I'm unsure about, not comfortable with. So I'd be more supportive of saying revise the property tax cap consistent with the AWC position, or something like that. I just personally don't want to endorse the population growth factor, because I don't understand the, that it, in my understanding, it is not convincing to me as a rationale, whereas inflation completely is.
So I think what I'm hearing is going back to revise the property tax cap consistent with the Association of Washington City priority.
Couple nods, two nods, look, waiting, okay, three nods, four.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
I would prefer to not include the population growth portion. I just, I don't understand the justification unless it's just for cities that see in... I, I just, I don't understand the justification unless it's just for cities that see in very, um, short, like a, a very high increase in a very short period of time and then they have to do that adjustment. I, like, I, I'm not, I don't know why, I don't want to put it on this legislative priority, um, shortlist if I don't feel like it applies to Anacortes. And to me, the inflation is the component that makes sense that I would, that I would be more inclined to focus on.
So maybe the AWC language with the exception of the population inflator or, no, not, that's a wrong word, with, with population growth.
I could just remove the, the, the reference to the, the population growth. And then still keep it up to three percent? So it would say then, under the, the, the priority would be revise the property tax cap to tie it to inflation factors up to three percent. I think I'm here, see, nods. Part of the reason that we were waiting until tonight's meeting to, to then have the legislative priorities come back is that there was a hundred thousand dollar proviso in the, this year's, um, budget to have a study done to, to look at the ability to resume the international ferry run prior to, to twenty thirty. Um, that was due on December fifteenth and in conversations late last week with the, the ferries, um, they indicated that, that likely will not be available until mid-January. So based on that, um, I would like to just include a sentence, something to the, the fact that, um, invest in Washington State ferries to provide service, um, between Anacortes, San Juan Islands and Sydney, British Columbia, um, prior i- in, in twenty twenty-four, just in, in twenty twenty-four. Um, and that is not referencing whether it would be, you know, the, the full ferry service or if it would just, if it would be public, meaning through Washington State ferries or a private service or if it would be, um, walk-on only or, or vehicle. It just leaves a lot of things, but it indicates our, our real desire. And I think that there is a lot of focus and that I would not be surprised if the, the governor's budget has some language specifically, uh, in regard to the, the international run from what I understand.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I'm looking at this section and there, there's a, there are a lot of words in this section. So if you, so just kind of trying to follow along, if you said something like, invest in inter-island and international passenger-only ferry service until regular WSF ferry service resumes, something just kind of brief like that, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just one, one statement, but trying not to, to limit ourselves about whether it be public or private, whether it be, you know, vehicle or, or foot traffic only. So trying to just say, this is a priority to, to get the service resumed in some fashion.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Uh, as written there, it does say fund an inter-island and international passenger-only ferry service. So those words, passenger-only, we would strike. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting now.
I, I think that leaves the universe open, uh, wider. And we then don't have to have a debate about whether we want to talk about passenger-only or not. Um, I'm hoping that we can get some presentation from WashDOT once they've got that report out, uh, early next year. And we can always revisit this, you know, depending, whichever way that report goes, we can revisit this and say, well, our lobbying position is going to be A or B or C. And then send staff off to try to make that happen.
It, it is safe to say that the council is very much in support of restoring the, uh, Anacortes to Sydney ferry run? Okay.
Um, just, and then we made just some other minor changes at the, at the request of council just in terms of, um, making it Anacortes specific. So we, uh, invested, um, we were talking about our urban forest lands, um, and, um, we'd included broadband, of course, as a part of the infrastructure, which is unique to Anacortes.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I was the one who suggested investment in wildfire planning, um, at the last meeting. However, there was a bill in the last legislative session, um, that passed that, uh, addresses that. So we, in the interest of brevity, I would, I would actually strike that one.
See any, I don't see any objections.
Removing that section on wild.
Wild, on the wildfire planning.
I'm gonna do that. The, the next item is, uh, something that was specific out of the, the council, um, meeting. We've added a, a new priority, investment in affordable and subsidized housing to incentivize multifamily construction by allowing cities to exempt qualifying multifamily housing projects from state and local sales tax. And there is a very similar program to this for commercial office space already exists. So it's a, a reference point for that conversation.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
It's just, it subsidized should have a Z instead of an S. And that's in the document too.
Um, this is a, a joint request through Skagit County, um, that they received, uh, twelve point seven million dollars last year through the legislature and they're asking for additional three. We want to, to support that effort. This is for Crisis Relief Stabilization Center. And the, the one, uh, the additional three million dollars would be to, uh, offset additional construction costs and for startup operating fees that are just one-time costs. And then the, the next item is expanding and supporting behavioral health resources. And this is, um, I don't think that there was any discussion about any changes in this previously. And a new, um, or just an item that we talked about previously was that this is specifically a request through Washington City's Insurance Authority. The, the city of Anacortes is a, a member of the authority and our costs are associated with the, the cost of claims. Um, recently there have been, um, changes in the, the way that, uh, claims and litigation have what they're calling nuclear verdicts, um, that the, the impact is the, uh, higher assessment for cities to, to pay for those insurance premiums. There's also hardening insurance market, so it becomes harder and harder for us to, to get the, those additional layers of coverage. So the amount that we become responsible for upfront before the, the secondary coverage goes into effect, um, is just getting, getting larger. So we're just asking that they look at tort reforms that would reduce the liability and related costs, including caps on amount of damages that could be collected against public entities. And this is something that is, um, already in effect with thirty-three other states, um, but not Washington. Uh, reinstating or reinstituting immunities and amending the law in joint and several liability. So this is a, a request that's been a couple of years in the, the making through Washington City's Insurance Authority. Um, but I think it is easy to, to get behind as we look at our increasing costs for that, that liability insurance.
Counsel, any questions about this one? Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I guess I'm just wondering if the second prong, beginning with explore, really, really covers all that we're asking for there. I think it, it's more direct.
That would be fine and it would save some space on our, on our pages and that will be part of our talking points. And, but then, uh, I think you're right.
Amending, uh, joint and several liability, uh, assumedly just for public entities?
Yes.
Yeah, would, um, that would be a big step. Obviously it would reduce costs for their cities, but it would, it would be a big, it would be a very big deal. I, so I would, I would support, I guess, striking the, the first paragraph because it, it's the second paragraph that says the things that we want.
We'll make those changes.
Yep, I got head nods.
Then, um, the, the final item is a, a new one that, that's come up, um, since, uh, since we last met in November. We are having more contracts that are cloud and software as a service provider that can have, um, access to personally identifiable information or health information or just sensitive operating information. And so, uh, the legal department has done some research on this as they're reviewing the, the contracts. And they're making the recommendation that I, I think is an important one is that, that we make sure that there is a data protection plan that would, um, be in, in effect for all the, the cloud and software as a service provider. I don't expect that it'll probably, you know, be new law that will go into effect this year, but I think it creates a, a good conversation for us being good stewards of a new way of doing, doing business that is the norm now.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
So what, what are we asking the legislature to do here, though?
Um, to, to work to ensure that there are some data protection plans that are mandatory within, um, software as a service or cloud-based, uh, environments and.
We're asking for, for regulation of software providers?
I think a, a better understanding or expectation of what the requirements are as they're dealing with the, the personal identifiable, identifiable ina- information. Ms. Walton may have some additional feedback.
I do, thank you, Mayor Miller. Um, yeah, so wh- what we are noticing is there are lots of contracts coming up for IT products that include ownership of personal data. The city has a lot of information that data processors and information companies are interested in knowing. Things like apps that we use for the fire department that provide information about the structural layout of buildings then gets sold to third parties if the contracts allow it, which then are used to, uh, impact insurance rates for end customers. Um, what we have seen is there are other states that have, uh, privacy laws in place that address other privacy issues. Um, and in fact, there was, I believe, a bill back in, I want to say twenty eighteen, that came up in Washington State that would do similar things. And so there's, you know, there, there are models out there for this type of legislation that regulates people's rights to privacy and information. Um, and, and we see that as something that would clarify how important this information is. But it would also give us a better position to be able to negotiate with some of these big organizations on, on, you know, these contracts where we're potentially giving, uh, them critical information about our community, um, at, that, that we don't know how it's used. So currently the legal department is, you know, negotiating these terms through contracts, um, but we can only negotiate with parties that are willing to negotiate with us. So we're looking to the legislature to, to provide some regulation as other states have done.
That, that makes sense to me. Uh, obviously we're not in a strong bargaining position versus mega corporations, but the state of Washington could be in a better bargaining position versus mega corporations. And a lot of jurisdictions use a lot of the same software, so it wouldn't just be a one-off uh, that they would lose out on if, if they weren't willing to amend their terms. Um, I don't think this language captures any of that, though. I, I mean, there's a bunch of capitalized terms of art in here and it says enact a comprehensive data protection plan. And that is either overly broad or misses, misses the point or something. I, I just don't, I don't see that as being valuable as, uh, something for us to put in our legislative priorities because it doesn't clearly articulate what we need.
I think we could probably work to, to come up with a better language there.
Yeah, I think one of the words you're looking for is regulation.
Yes.
In that, yeah.
Regulate software providers or, or software packages or whatever to, um, protect the city's, uh, personally identifiable data or HIPAA-protected data or maybe it's broader than that, but, yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Um, you know, we have to draw the line someplace and begin the battle for, um, protection of data as much as we can. I mean, we're hearing breaches everywhere, we've got ransoms coming up, you know? It, it, it really seems unfettered. And I think that anything that we can do to, um, restrict or place the onus in our negotiations, I think is a positive step that I wish more people would do. Um, you know, right now, I, I'm not sure when Equifax can have a data breach, when the hospital can have a data breach, when everybody with personal private information can have a data breach and for a price, you can extrapolate from some agency every single centilla of, um, who you are, what you are, what you even put in your shopping cart. And I think that, you know, uh, these discussions about what we need to do or try to do to help that is only a positive step. Is it, is it enough? No. But we have to begin the conversation and hopefully more people will take it up and we'll be able to at some point better regulate our personal data being placed in the hands of people whom we don't want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you for the, the really good feedback tonight. Um, I thi- I think that we have some changes that we can make and have it prepared to, to come back to council for adoption on the, the second. It's still in advance of the, the session going into effect. And, um, I think I have good, good, uh, walking, walking orders.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Moulton and then Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. I think based on our discussion tonight, I think we're really close to getting it down to a two-pager, which I would dearly love to see. Thanks.
Mr. Walters.
I, I wonder if we also might not discuss, uh, prioritization of the priorities. And, and in my view, the counties ask for the money supporting their crisis stabilization campus. Should be one of our top priorities because, A, it's money, which is probably easier to provide than complicated legislation. Uh, two, it supports, uh, our partner in Skagit County. But, but three, it also addresses this gigantic need of behavioral health. And it also goes right along with the other behavioral health goal. So that's, that's what I would put at or, or very near the top. Um, and then the, the second and third would be the Sydney Ferry and the assistance in recruitment of police officers. But depending on how this is laid out, you know, maybe things don't work quite the same way. It's just, um, i- if we are to achieve the, the restoration of the Sydney Run or anything looking like it, it's, it's going to really need to be articulated as one of our very top priorities. Um, so it should, it should be reflected that way in the document.
Do you capture that, Ms. Yu?
I did, thank you. I'll bring it back in a second.
Okay, any, Mr. Young.
Thank you. I, um, I just wanted to say one more thing that I thought was so important and to share with you. I had a fascinating two-hour discussion with, uh, the C-Suite at Skagit Regional Health and then, uh, a, a very lengthy discussion with the board in, um, uh, C-Suite at Island Health. And, you know, prior, in my prior life, I consulted for all three hospitals on efficiencies. But one of the things that came out of that discussion that I wasn't as clear on that I am now is that the crisis we're truly in, uh, with mental health, um, you know, uh, drugs and the, the drive and the youth and there's a hole. And there's a huge hole, even in all the work that's being done by the family center, you know, like, out there as well as, you know, community action, there's so many other people. But it is not enough, not nearly enough. And the tragedy is that hospitals are holding people longer because they have to and there's no place to go and there's no reimbursement for them for that. And so at the end of the day, the cost associated with this is dramatic. And what's really driving small hospitals and big hospitals to the brink of just financial insolvency in so many ways. And so those are critical things that we need to begin to address. And particularly in this case here, there are those existential costs associated with it that comes out of all of our pockets right now anyway. And if we want quality healthcare here to remain in our cities, we have to begin this process and making it a priority because it's a priority affecting all of our lives and all of our, uh, families. So, you know, for me, uh, uh, agreeing with Mr. Walters in this case, you know, I think it's a big deal because it's, you know, affects jobs, it affects, you know, everything that we see happening in our lives. And so, you know, this push that we. And so, you know, this push that we're doing is very important, and I'm thankful for it.
Okay, so before I move off of this topic, I realize this is a public comment item. Any member of the public would like to comment on the legislative priorities for 2024. Okay, I thought you might be interested in comment items.
Ah, yes, Steve Anderson, Kingsway. So a comment being an ex-IT professional with six Microsoft certifications. I saw I could add a little bit of verbiage that you might want to put in there. Home Depot, all right, I was going to say Home Depot, had a security breach, not because they didn't follow their procedures protocol, had massive firewalls and everything. They had a service entity that they allowed access onto their servers. And that is how the hackers gained access into the Home Depot and compromised everybody's credit cards. So while you say, hey, we're going to have protection, this, that, and the other thing, I don't know if any business entity has access to the the servers that belong to the city. That's one thing to investigate thoroughly, if there are any business entities that have direct access to your servers. Enough said.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, going to move on to item 6E. This is Ben Root Skate Park Project Update. This is a discussion item, and it's open for public comment as well. Mr. Lunsford.
Evening, Mayor, council members. There we go. There's a nice picture of the new park in action. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the project, where we're at, and where we need to go. So thank you, Mayor, and council members who were able to join us for the ribbon cutting on the seventh of December. Mr. Voges is here as well. He was our project manager with Justin Simons from Public Works. On that rainy day, we had people turn out trying to skate. The concrete that's set up here, as you can see, is quite, there's a lot less friction there, so it allows you to roll easily and also slip easily if it's raining. So we, despite all that, we had a lot of people out turning out to go, and you still do. So you got a lot of people doing that. We are working on getting our lights set up, working with the general contractors, trying to get those from the manufacturer. If you get questions on that, we're doing our very best to get that here in a very timely fashion so people can skate through the park hours, which are till 10 o'clock. So there's a nice picture of Ms. Monteen. Ms. Monteen with the Skate Park Improvement Project was the one who, with the mayor, cut the ribbon. Her organization has raised quite a bit of money, but the reason we're here tonight to talk about this in discussion only is because we are short of cash. And we knew that going into the contract. When the contract came in, it was much higher than our engineers' estimate. And speaking at the time with Mr. Hoagland and at the time Public Works Director, Mr. Hash, we knew that we had reserves that could be gathered from either REIT or park reserves or my capital reserves to meet that deficit. So I just want to bring that to your attention tonight. We'll probably come to you, because we don't have cash allotted, to do this through the budget process. We'll come to you with a fourth quarter budget amendment. That's when we'll be discussing an action item. Tonight is just discussion to inform you and the public where we're at, and also let the public know that despite the efforts of Ms. Monteen and her organization, you're still able to donate to the Skate Park Project. They are doing things such as pledge a ledge, where you can talk to them about naming a certain feature in the park after your business, family, organization, what have you, as many have already done. But there's still room to do that, and you just need to contact Ms. Monteen at the Skate Park Improvement Project, or call our number, 360-293-1918, and we will gladly connect you. So we are in the midst of a contract for 1.5, approximately $1 million, to build the park. Thanks to the efforts of the very generous community we live in, we've so far been able to raise 1.15, and the delta, as Ms. as the mayor likes to say, is about $362,320,000. So as I said, we worked with Mr. Hoagland and Mr. Hash at the time to look at what we have in reserve. And Mr. Hoagland believes we have a we have healthy fund balance in REIT, healthy fund balance in parks reserve. Between the two, we could make that happen. So that would be something we would bring to you with much more clarity in the future, understanding of what both are, so you're making an informed decision at that time. So we think we have a we've shown, this community has shown its generosity and the trestle, this project, many other items in the town, great supportive parks and youth, and we think that they'll come through again. But if they are not able to raise this, this is a significant ask to our already generous donor base, we would be asking you to help us make that difference so we can meet the contract obligations. So I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Voges again is here to answer any specific questions. He knows a lot more than I do about the project, if you have any at this time.
And part of the reason of bringing this to council and the public's attention, it is the end of the tax year, so, you know, if you're so inclined, there's an opportunity there, and that number may not be the same number we bring back to council, so.
Correct, Mayor. Thank you, yes. And the Skate Park Improvement Project is a 501(c)(3), so taxes are talked about. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Lunsford, while all of that is true, that we have fund balance in a variety of places to pay for this, we're not going to have to shut off the lights at City Hall. We do have other uses for those funds as well. So I don't want audience members, reporters, the public watching here in the room to walk away with too rosy of a picture because REIT can be spent on pavement management, which is just an unending bucket of need. REIT can be spent on maintenance of our parks, and this one is going to require maintenance as well. So I definitely would encourage the community to to look for extra change between their couch cushions for this project. Even if it's a small amount of money, you can you can buy a ledge in the park through the Pledge a Ledge program. If it's a larger amount of money, that would be great, too, because that means some other park gets some maintenance, some other, probably five feet of road gets paved, and all of those things are important. With this, with the donation to this project, though, you'll also get the satisfaction of knowing that you made a big difference in some kids that are very excited and happy about this project. That, I think, is is quite a bit different than the other things we might ask you for money for. And so I think I I I expect that some members of the community will be willing to help fund this, and we are also very grateful to the ones that already have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Walters. Those are excellent points, and I think that one thing that the Skate Park does that, you know, a lot of kids that go there, especially with the addition of the pump track, we made a choice at the time not to phase that in because it would save us close to $75,000 to do it all now. So that was a choice that we made because it would save save the community money in the future. But that that track, if you go down, it's like, I made this analogy before, it's like a hill of ants. It's like there are so many people going around at the same time, finding their way, doing their thing. It's also a demographic, at the Skate Park in particular, that we don't hit in a lot of our programs, our recreation programs. So it's offering a place of gathering and physical activity to a demographic of youth that we don't often see in some of our programs. That's another reason we're very excited about it. So thank you for your points, Mr. Walters.
And and we made that choice with you, you know, to to approve to approve this project, even though we didn't have all the money lined up for it, because we know that there are pots that we can dig from if we have to, and because it's better to have it in place now than to wait one more year or two more years until all that money is lined up. So it's still the right approach and still the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Mr. Lunsford, thank you. Could you remind us where the best place is to go, the easiest place to go and make a donation?
So you would go to the Skate Park, Anacortes Skate Park Improvement Project website. You can do that there. They have a website. Also, the Parks Foundation has been generous in accepting funds, too, if one doesn't find your way to the Skate Park. The Skate Park Project is set up to do that with their own website and collects the money quite quite well. So if folks are familiar to giving to the Parks Foundation, they would get it to us as well. But those two would be the best. Thank you, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On to item 6F, I believe, and this is interlocal agreement with the APD for Washington Traffic Safety Commission Traffic Safety Grant. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Chief Floyd has this one.
Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience, good evening again. So the contract, item F here, is with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, and this is the reimbursement that allows our officers to participate in traffic safety emphasis patrols throughout the year. We've historically done this every year, and this contributes to increased traffic safety, lower fatalities for collisions, and just safer roads all the way around through these emphasis patrols.
Again, interlocal for a grant for the APD to participate. Any questions for Chief Floyd?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Floyd. Does the amount stay pretty consistent from year to year, or does it go up with inflation or anything?
There's small adjustments to account for the increase in labor costs from year to year, but beyond that, there's there's no difference in the grant amounts.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I move that City Council authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement 23312APD001 between the City of Anacortes and Washington Traffic Safety Commission.
Second. Yeah, motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter, to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Anacortes and Washington Traffic Safety Commission as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciag.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Clely McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item 6G, contract modification, Anacortes Family Center Social Worker Agreement. And Chief Floyd is here, but we also are delighted to have our guest, and Mr. Chief Floyd.
Thank you, sir. So we're back for the second time this year with a contract modification, and as you recall, last time we were before you regarding our family center contract, we wanted to align the contract to align with our budget cycle, so it's a little easier to track from year to year in those costs. And Mr. Johnson's been so kind as to help put together a few slides for your enjoyment. So I'd like to just go and quick review of the program since we started this. This was something that came about in our budget discussions at the end of 2020 for the 2021 budget, and we, as a city, had $50,000 that was set aside to have some social work to address some of the the needs that we saw with unhoused individuals, individuals that were having difficulties. We used that money that was allocated to partner with the family center, and the reason we went that route as opposed to some of the other models that were out there, number one, it just it fit our needs as a city better than some of the other models. A city-employed social worker would have been much more expensive. It would have taken much more time to hire that position, get them trained up, to have the capabilities that the family center already possessed. We had a pre-existing high level of trust between the city and the family center, and that relationship was easy to transition into a position for a social worker agreement that we had a resource coordinator that could get those resources out to the individuals that need them in a much more expedient fashion, eliminated some additional levels that create barriers, and the family center has a fantastic track record, and there was no use-of-force concerns there with the family's family center's participation. The resource coordinator has now been able to develop some long-term relationships with individuals that were a little more service-resistant. They have boots on the ground out there with our outreach team. It's consisting of the community paramedic, a member from my staff, and this is also making sure that we are compliant with the Circuit Court decision in Martin versus City of Boise. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson now, and he will share with you some more program highlights and recent updates.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson, again.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So I my part of the presentation is to go over the fun part, which are the people that are making all of the tremendous impacts for us. Hopefully, you guys have received our monthly reports that show the impact in the work that of these two individuals. So this basically is was originally set up to support Nina Lundston's position as resource manager. How we have kind of divided the work between these two extraordinary extraordinary individuals is Nina is kind of the the attractant for all of the programs that we can bring into Skagit County. So things like coordinated entry, she's our coordinated entry point person. Lifeline Connections, which is a medication-assisted treatment program, works out of our office two days a week, every week. She's providing a lot of critical tech support for the city in many facets, including in our cold-weather shelter considerations with Salvation Army. So we take that on. She is the appointed case manager for those folks, and the Salvation Army gets the benefit of the contract with the city, and the city gets the benefit of Nina's resources as the case manager behind it. Anytime there is a family that's in need, Nina works with those folks. Anytime there's an individual in need, that person works with Ashley Wick. What we ended up getting to through partnership with the fire department and through some good work from Chief Harris is that we had an opportunity to go to North Sound ACH to double kind of the capacity of this program, but we didn't want to come to the city and ask for double the budget amount and blow that out of the water. So what we did is we worked with North Sound ACH, found a program that really was kind of hand and glove for what we were looking for, which is take the capacity for building relationships, like Nina has the ability to do, but really specialize in in a more peer mentorship role, where there's someone who can sit down and spend three hours working on unending applications with different folks for for different reasons. And that's really where Ashley's role comes in. So these two individuals really do work as a team and and bounce off of each other pretty tremendously. These are just some of the results that we highlighted in our last report that we sent to you. The biggest number that obviously is the call-out here is the number of clients that we've supported in graduation, primarily, and Chief mentioned this, these are not clients that are easy to serve or easy to graduate. These are folks that have spent years on T Avenue and on on park benches, have caused massive problems, and are incredibly resistant to services. So when we stood up, or I think on Zoom in 2020, when we initially started talking about this program, one of the things we said was, you know, this is a program of showing up and building relationship, because we have to catch clients when they're in a pre-contemplative phase, even if that's for 10 minutes, and they have to know who to call and who's available during that time to maximize the opportunity to kind of say, you're ready, let's go. And I think that this, these results really kind of prove out that theory that we shared with you, that if we had staff in position, if we developed the proper relationships, that we could get to really positive results for our community, even in the hardest of circumstances. So hopefully, you see that as a win. I think our community should be incredibly proud, and hopefully you also see it as a tremendous return on investment. This is one last story. This is a gentleman who's a longtime Anacortes resident, someone who spent a lot of time both in our parkland, on our beaches, and really is kind of the the person that a lot of folks come to us and and mention, hey, why isn't something being done about this person? Multi-generational Skagit County individual, really did not have the advantages that most of us had in life, didn't get the opportunity to finish school, was horribly abused as a kid. horribly abused as a kid, bounced back and forth after a really acrimonious divorce between he and his mom, and had a really difficult time stabilizing in adulthood, and especially in kind of latter adulthood into his, his geriatric years. He lived in a storage shed at one point. The city provided money. It was the first year you provided money for the cold weather shelter. He, he was pointed to us as a result of that. And we started serving him in kind of a fabric of ways that kind of all linked together to try to make sure that he had some stability and some opportunity to see growth in himself and the opportunity for him to be stabilized. And so we, he was the first, one of the first people identified for our landing project when we opened up our new building in August, and is now a very happy fourth-floor tenant that feels like the city and this opportunity saved his life. So, really excited to share his story because it's one of many, many on our campus. So that kind of answers all the questions. If you have any others.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and thank you especially for highlighting Nina and Ashley as well. I can't think of any two individuals that have had so much of an impact on solving some very difficult challenges we've had with people who have been living on the streets of Anacortes for years.
Yes.
You know, I can't think of another better word than, like you said, difficult cases. And, and it was with their perseverance and, and just, and just building that level of trust and getting that right moment. So, thanks for, thanks for that.
We feel very lucky.
Questions? Okay, questions? And this is a contract modification. As you can see, these are coming up because they were in the budget. Now that you've approved the budget, that's why we're bringing these up. All right. Awful quiet.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move that we authorize the contract amendment as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Ms. Hubig to approve the contract modification, Anacortes Family Center Social Worker Agreement as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac?
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Onto item 6H. This is a contract award, 2024 Anacortes Community Action Office and Care Specialist.
Evening, Mayor, council. So, tonight we have a contract award for the Community Action, sometimes referred to as Satellite Office, in Anacortes. In the budget that the council passed today, there was $60,000 for the Anacortes Office of Community Action, which is staffed by a care specialist. Last week, you probably remember, Sandy Finney from Community Action presented to the council about the progress of that Anacortes office and what they do. I think she did a good job explaining their mission and their impact. So I'm not gonna try to hit those highlights today. I don't think I could do that justice anyway. So, the contract that the council is considering tonight is to continue the city's partial funding of the Anacortes Office of Community Action.
All right, any questions for Mr. Coleman? In the contract, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I would just like to say I really appreciate the level of detail in this, in this contract and the breakdown that we were given by Ms. Finney in the 2024 proposed budget. It's very clear, the work they're doing, what it costs, and the reporting requirements, and the, I mean, everything, it goes into great detail. So I really appreciate seeing that. I think that's, that's really good. And like you said, we heard from Ms. Finney about their effect already. So, I'll let other council members speak as well, unless no one wants to, and then I would make a motion. All right, how about if I do that? I move that we authorize the mayor to sign this contract with Community Action, an amount of $60,000 to continue to provide the services of the Anacortes Community Action Office and Care Specialist through 2024.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Ms. Moulton, and a second by Mr. Young to approve the contract with Community Action, Skagit County, an amount of $60,000 as presented, to continue to provide those services. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and before we hit to the next item, which is adjournment, I polled a number of council members, and the staff has been diligently trying to shuffle calendars around. So, with the consent of the council, then we will, we can not have a meeting on the 26th, the day after Christmas.
Yes.
I think, I see head nods there, so we will plan on doing that. But with that, becomes another small action, just a couple minutes of patience. This will be Councilmember Carter's last council meeting. So I just want to thank him for his service to the City of Anacortes and to Ward 3, and have a small certificate with no gift card or anything like that in it.
Mayor Miller.
Okay, Mr. Young, go ahead.
No, no, I just.
All right, we'll let everybody praise.
You go right ahead, my friend.
Well, I'll, I'll wait till.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Follow your lead. Listen, I really want to thank Councilman Carter for his gift to our city, the hard work, the cool-headed deliberations on issues. He's truly been a, a great ally, at least for me, on some issues, and a counterbalance on others, and provides lots of thought into his actions. But, you know, really, the gift of public service is not always easy. And sometimes it's thankless, in a way. But it's also fulfilling, in the sense that we're giving back to the world and the people that matter. And I want to thank you personally for being a part of this for these years. And I can't wait to see what else is coming your way. But really, truly, thank you for being a part of this thing with all of us.
All right, so might as well capture the moment and come on and grip and grin. Okay, with that final piece of business, please have a happy and safe holidays and Christmas and all that good stuff. And we'll, council will see you in the new year. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned.